E D A in relation to what you're doing. I mean, at this point, this may be hypothetical, but what do you think that role ought to be?
So the town is, they contribute to us annually. That's part of our memorandum of understanding with the town, which they agreed to when the organization got started. They also have been very extremely helpful with appropriating funds for our grant matches since we just don't have that kind of income coming in. And so we, we work with them on some marketing campaigns and we try to make sure that we're, you know, when we're working with businesses that they have business licenses and Debbie is always so very generous with her time giving us numbers so that we can report whether or not our campaigns are working. And so that's kind of the role we play with the town. The E D A, we haven't done, we wanted to meet with them. We haven't had an opportunity to do so yet. But I see our role as my, you know, we can do some of the technical assistance stuff for downtown businesses through Virginia Main Street. So maybe it is the architectural rendering designs, you know, for a building that, that they're going to help fund the the renovation of. We could do the financial feasibility studies. Those are, those are the things that we can do as a Main Street organization to help kind of get through the upfront heavy lift so that we can get developers in and the E D A can work with them on helping them get funded at low interest loans.
Okay.
Could I add something?
Sure.
That I, I was thinking in response to your comments about the, you know, pushing restaurants from a practical standpoint. And Matt hopefully can give me some, some particulars, but I know that the restaurants contribute significantly to our tax.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's in our best interest to have a lot of people buying a lot of mules in town.
More ethnic options.
That would be lovely, lovely, but I don't think we want to discount marketing.
I'm not saying that at all, Cindy. Don't think that. What I'm saying is that sometimes that I'm not even putting on these guys, what I'm saying is that I, the definition of tourism I see on the shore tends to be it's sort of heads and beds beaches and, you know, okay, and, and it will mention food, have seafood, right? It actually doesn't necessarily speak about the variety or the different kinds of food or things like that, but there's, there's a certain Chamber of Commerce vision of tourism that I see up here too, but that looks strikes me as being more like what you see in Virginia Beach. But it might be that what we need is something that is different and unique to us, right? And so maybe you guys are moving towards articulating an approach that is more local read or regional, immediate regional in a way.
Absolutely. And when we first started this, we developed a brand architecture and identified our five main selling components and, and it of course is history and our culture here. And then we also have the walkability of our town and we had nature. So those, those pillars are the ones that we are promoting through our social media.
So to sort of circle back, so if I understand this conversation, what we're saying is that we're going to continue to focus on the core, which was what Cynthia was saying and what you've been saying, and then expand that area so that it's, it includes what Commissioner was saying.
Yeah. Yeah, B, the B two area, which is I'm really concerned about. I really am.
Virginia Main Street is very specific about where and how we can approach things. So we, we understand that.
But our Virginia Tourism Corporation grants, we do all businesses, home-based businesses, all of that. The one we just wrote, we've just partnered with the Inanan Hancock on as, as our lead partner for. So I mean, that's, they're not in our district and we're happy to, to work with them and we're happy to do what we can for all businesses, although we do have certain limitations on certain.
I think they, I think Main Street misdefined downtown, actually. Cause the, the way they did, they cut out all the minority businesses, right? It's the wrong definition of the town and how it works. And this isn't not just a problem. I mean, I saw it in Main Street in South Carolina, right? I saw it in Main Street that a lot of times what happened was it wound up actually cutting out because of the way it defined historic district. It actually wound up cutting out significant portions of the populations of these communities. And it was not the, it was not an intention. It was an, an outcome, an un, an unconsidered outcome. Because they also, the way they defined preservation, right? And, and what was, what was historically, what was viable for historic preservation. So, you know, it's an interesting set of problems and, you know, if, if it means that through other resources, you can move beyond thumbs up, you know, because the.
We can help them move.
And we, that's right.
Key, you know, they're not, they're not unique. They're a partner.
Right.
And so we also have to step up to.
Right.
Yeah, this is also a planning issue.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, um, I'll just mention, we're working on a timeline in this meeting and, but you know, it's a policy document with action steps. And then the town council will have to approve it and what they don't like, it could bounce back to us and then we'll have to gnash our teeth and figure it out, you know, but, um, you know, it's a policy, it's a policy document. So what do you think of are the challenges and problems facing the community more generally now as you read it? As you read in, in the community? Cause you guys around, around here, you know what, what you see. What do you, what do you think you see? What do you, do you guys ever talk about it?
Yeah, yeah, we do, we do. Um, I think some of the challenges are, um, some of the property owners, some of the, the rents are a bit on the high side, I think, for certain businesses to be able to, to be able to afford. We, we, we hear a lot about that and there's not much we can necessarily do about that. But maybe there's a conversation that we could have with property owners and real estate agents and, and you know, what, what, what would you be willing to do to get somebody in there? You know, how, how can we make this positive? So that it turns into a very fruitful experience for the property owner as well as for the business owner.
And the town.
As well, obviously the town.
Obviously, but the town has a partner in that discussion of what incentives are possible.
So that the town did, um, decide to do away with the tangible business property tax a few years ago. So that's helpful, although the county still charges. Um, and then our business license fee was reduced to just a, a flat rate. So no more paying on your gross sales receipt. So that automatically
generous.
Makes, makes the town a more business friendly, you know, opportunity area for some people. So.
And the people should know.
Yes, that, that's in our documents.
The study we did with the American Planning Association, we found that businesses coming into small towns like this, they have to have money behind them as well. You know, in, in fact, a lot of them are described as hobbies because they're not relying on their businesses to feed their families. So that is, that is definitely an issue that has to be.
That's a good point.
And we've already started talking to some property owners and some of them don't want to do anything. And that's a challenge. They want to let their vacant buildings stay vacant. And that is unfortunate, even if it's the most beautiful building. Sorry.
No, no, that's interesting to hear, you know? I mean, it's interesting to hear from you guys. I appreciate your candor on that. Yeah, very much. What would you like Onancock to be like in five years?
Wow. That's a big question.
Our tagline is.
Blue sky a little bit. It's okay.
Our tagline is a little slice of nowhere else. So we always want to be true to Onancock. We want to honor what we have here so that it is a one of a kind destination for people to come to. A place where people want to move their families here. So we just want more. I mean, we, we want this on a slight energy boost. Yeah.
We need younger.
Yes.
Yeah, seeing more kids around here than I did 10 years ago for sure. I mean, I don't have any scientific demographics on this, but I'm seeing a lot of wagons full of small children that I haven't seen.
I also think the town's in a unique position because there's some potential growth within the town and there's some growth that is slated to be just outside of town and we will be their downtown destination. So we are in a very unique position, I think, to offer up to people looking for business locations like we are able to mostly keep our businesses going year round and, and during COVID, our, our restaurants actually thrived. Our community is all in and I think that speaks volumes to how important Onancock is to everyone and, and I, I can see us were growing, but still keeping that small town charm because it's just, it's in us.
Right. I, I do think that the, I don't know what to call it, but the task for us is to really decide how we want to grow. That we have to take charge of our own growth. It's coming, right? And so how do we take charge of that in a, in a collaborative, good way? And, you know, to maintain the, the qualities that we cherish about the community. But yeah, it's, yeah. Is there, uh, let me see if any of my colleagues here have other questions that they want to have answered. Jeff, do you want to say anything about your role on Main Street?
They've articulated it very well, so.
Okay. Cindy, anything else that, no? So, yeah, is there anything that you would like the Planning Commission to consider as possible action steps for the comprehensive plan?
I would like to add, I wrote a comprehensive plan for the town of North Beach 13 years ago. It's key that it includes all of these aspects that we're talking about. O B C A, the Main Street Board, we can't do anything without a planning, a, a very solid comprehensive plan that addresses these issues. If you think this town has a problem with change, what we had to do so that you had, I know it's a, it's all public opinion and everyone's going to have an opinion, but, um, it has to be written so that it has to, because and Planning Commission too, when it changes over time, if there's no teeth in this document, it just slipped. Design guidelines, design standards, all of those things. I think we've talked a little bit about that and of how we go about that. With the Main Street Board. But it has to have teeth within the.
And that not happened in the past. So, um, that may require, you know, I've been doing this for a few months about zoning and it's making my head spin. So, so, um, yeah. It's, it's on our radar.
Process, I, I, you know, we are a small town and we like to be able to, to kind of conduct ourselves like that, but at the end of the day, I, you know, we're all adults and we need to make sure we're all following the rules.
And conditions are changing. I mean, that's the thing. And the transition from the Onancock of 10 or 20 years ago and now has, has got painful moments and it's going to continue to have some painful moments. I mean, you know, there's, there's parties that have been around a really long time. There's a lot of new arrivals. I mean, there's lots of different ideas about where things should go. And not a lot of expertise in having a civil conversation, which I'm also hoping we can promote a little bit. So, um, yeah. So, yeah, what, so is there anything specifically that you'd like to see as a potential action step? Is there anything comes to mind? What should we particularly alert to? In general, maybe. You can also email later.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, let, let us think on that and we'll be happy to, we'll, we'll get these documents out to you as well as we'll, we'll, we'll think on it and get and kind of put together some thoughts. Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, John.
You talk about teeth.
So fines, our teeth?
Yeah.
Yeah, teeth.
Yeah. What are teeth?
Oh, it ha, it has to be enforced. It has to be enforceable. Really enforcement is the biggest issue and it can't be gray. You know, there has to be enough that it's, you know, money doesn't get around anything or no money, um, or knowing someone. It's a small town, so you know who you know and what you know. And, um, I see things happening in town that probably, you know, that it just happens. So.
Yeah, it's true.
If you don't have it, a document that the next Planning Commission can enforce and the next town council that stays by it. It's really, it really comes down to a strong document and enforcement and that can, that can also be written somewhat into a comp plan, how you do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any other, anything else you want us to know about you?
Well, I did, I also, um, and which we can email you was I, I did bring a map of our district so that you have some clarity and some reference points. If we're somehow in the document. So, so we've got that. We can share that with you electronically as well. The, the biggest thing is I wasn't the most excited about Main Street getting started when I worked for the town. I kind of watched it from its inception. I thought it was a little too big for their britches, but really being part of the organization and seeing what they're doing and we, we're doing a really good job and I'm very proud of what we do and, and our, my board members are spectacular and it's like high level and they're, the planning is just, I, I can't say enough about this board. I'm, I'm just very enamored with them. But, but I just think that Main Street has shown our worth over the time. We're doing more with partners, uh, trying to do more collaborative things, trying to be more, you know, conversational with our businesses, just keeping them up to date on stuff. Uh, and that has really been blooming over the last few years. And so I just think, you know, Main Street is, is really important to this town and we're able to do things and help maybe alleviate some of the things that the town staff can't quite get to. Maybe we alleviate some of that.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Access to grants that they're not.
Exactly. So, you know, I think that we're a nice little accent to the town and I think that we're growing in a very positive manner.
How many board members are there now?
There's eight.
Eight.
Yes, this is, yeah.
That's actually a nice sized board. You can get something done with eight.
We, we just pulled on three this year. So we're, and, and everybody's just dynamic. So. Yes, Cindy recruited.
You did? All right. There you go. Um, any other questions from any of my colleagues? I, I want to thank you guys very much for coming and sharing your energy and the variety of things you're working on. You know, I've got to go back and do research and get on your websites and, you know, I'll get caught up a little better with you. And, uh, we certainly, I know I have learned a lot this evening already. And I hope that as the plan develops and we, we will be sharing a draft down the road, that you will make a point of taking a look at it, right? I mean, it's not going to make everybody happy, but hopefully it'll make enough people happy that.
Do the best you can.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we'll get this stuff out. And we'll get some thoughts together.
There as well.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for the bookmark.
You're welcome. I'm so proud of that. I can't stand it.
Hey, see, this is Jim.
Oh, I forgot. Yeah. Wait a minute, Jen, did you want to ask a question?
Well, yeah. I, I wanted to ask if they, if the Main Street.
You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm not muted.
I know. He looks like he's singing.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll hold my thing up.
Okay, just go ahead because you're getting picked up as a text.
Oh, okay.
You're getting picked up as captions.
Can Main Street provide a, a summary description of their program that we can put in the comp plan text? It doesn't have to be very long, but it would be nice to have just a.
We, we can work on that.
Yeah.
Thank you from us.
And I, I think the discussion has been great.
We're going to have a bunch of appendices. The way we're going to handle that, there'll be a demographic appendancy. There'll be appendix. There'll be some different maps. You know, we don't want to turn the, the, the body of the plan into a giant plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. And I just, I just wanted to, uh, I appreciate Mike's comments about the comp plan and, and the ordinances and in Virginia, a comp plan is, is an advisory document, but it, but it provide, provides the legal basis for the ordinances. So it's very important that, like Mike said, that they, they coordinate well, but I, I, I'd look forward to meeting Mike and talking to him more about, about this.
Oh, there you go. All right.
Well, that's it. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm in a noisy spot.
It's like we're getting captions from. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you for reminding me. It's hard to keep track. It's hard to, I mean, to have my antenna out in all directions. So. Oh, and I forgot, we also were allowing public comment on Main Street. We had a little couple of comment. Is there anybody who wants to public comment on Main Street, specifically on the discussion about Main Street?
Yeah.
No. Oh, okay.
Jeff over on Johnson Street here in Anancock, uh, I think this exchange has been incredible. I really wish there was more of this going on in town because as a resident here, we're almost four years now. Let me give you just a little story. Two weeks ago, there was, I met a couple down on Market Street who just arrived from New Mexico. They live out in Seaview. They're looking at the town and they're going, well, God, the great buildings and what a great little town. And I told them, I said, this town has incredible foundation. They're working on getting storefronts filled up. And, uh, you know, I would like, I, that, that would be my focus. You know, the two main words you're using here is economic development. You know, let's get people in these storefronts. Uh, I understand what, but, and you know, I, I send you stuff from Main Street. Main Street's all over Virginia. They do some great things. There's great examples out there. But marketing goes so far. You know, you do your marketing and do your studies, you know what needs to happen and you kind of focus towards that. We need to get people in these storefronts, you know? Uh, I was really disappointed when Ameren like left, but now there's somebody replacing him real quick. And I was kind of disappointed to hear it was all, all about getting a $17,000 hood for an oven in there, you know? Uh, well, if that's what you need to get a, you know, to get a business going again, then get the damn hood, you know? Uh, we need to get business in town. We need to draw people in. And everybody talks about all these little things that need to come here. You know, we don't want this to be the suburbs because that's out on 13 and only, you know, we don't want that here. We want this cute little town. And we want, we need to fill up those storefronts, you know? And I know a couple of people who need a, you know, let's, let's get a oven there. Let's stop building if you don't want it, you know, we need, we need something to get here. And you know, I'm just, that's just spouting off, but.
No, that's all right.
Great town. Oh my God. You know, you walk around and it's the history, you know, and a lot more restaurants. You know, you can have a lot more restaurants here and it could be whatever, but you need them. Let's get a breakfast place in. Let's get a burger place in. Like if somebody talked about a brew house, they talked about that for a while, you know? You know, draw people and you don't want it to be Cape Charles, but it won't be Cape Charles.
Won't be. We don't have a beach. Thank God. We don't have a beach.
Great work, Mary.
Yeah.
There's not so many, but I've had my share. Thanks so much.
Gustatory, gustatory tourism. Where we become a food mecca. There we go. Okay. So, uh, thank you again, uh, everybody from Main Street for this. It was really helpful and I learned a lot. Let me get myself up. I'm falling off my cushion here. Okay. So the, the next, we're moving on to. And what we wanted to do was to, the beginning thing is, next item may take a little more time, what?
But Jim, he may have limited time on his phone.
True. What I wanted to do though was quickly hand out the timeline. Let me hand this out to you. Which I sent you a copy online, but there's so many challenges with this. Here's two for you. Here's three for you. So, and I have a few copies to share with the public. If you want to see what we're thinking about in terms of a timeline for completing the comprehensive plan, I'm happy to share these.
Is this different than what's in the packet? They're not in the packet.
It's, it's not in the packet. Yeah, there's.
It was an email.
Yeah, it was an email. I moved a little too slow for the packet. Um, yeah. Yeah, it's a separate email and, uh, we will, when we have a final timeline, we'll put it in our packet. We'll put it in a meeting packet. So this is my proposed timeline and what we're talking about is July, August, September, October. Uh, our conversations with a bunch of different groups. And we could also have room for another conversation in November if I'm missing somebody we need to add. The big, the tough part's going to be mid-October to mid-November, which we're, we need to do public input sessions before Christmas, the Christmas madness of Onancock starts. Cause starting in mid-November, everybody acts like they can't possibly do anything else except Christmas. And, um, so what I'm thinking about is a large group workshop like most are all of the Planning Commission members, so it can be announced and everybody can attend. But I also want to have small groups meeting in the neighborhoods, meeting in neighborhoods. And so a little further on, I'll talk to you about, I'm going to start looking for neighborhood groups. And I also have had the suggestion to see if I can gather together a small group of teenagers. And also specifically a group of families with small children. So I'm going to try to do that for these more informal conversations, maybe with two of us in, in there, just talking to them about their perceptions of the town. So that'll be busy and I'm really, and, and I know I'm planning, I'm really participating in these, we'll be in them. So I'm kind of uh, already making sure my calendar stays clear. And, uh, I won't expect you all to participate in every single one and you can't because if we have more than two of us, right? But I thought we could go in twos to, for some of these meetings and that we could also then, uh, maybe record the results and have minutes that, and notes that we share. So by December of 2025, I'll propose a table of contents and appendices for your comment. Based on the conversations that we've had, the things that we have said in meetings over the fall. And, uh, whatever else you want to add to this. Um, I know that there's been some confusion or concern about how to start with your sections. And what I would say is the place to start is to go to the existing comprehensive plan, look at the structure of, of the writing there and then see what we want to do that's, that might be a little what different and topics that might want to be a little different. So, uh, January through March, we're going to try to produce a draft and we'll work on a shared Google Doc. And if you're, haven't written in a while and you're not comfortable about it, don't worry about it. I've been editing, uh, student papers, dissertations, manuscripts for a million years and I can query you and, uh, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'm devoting a lot of time to sort of keeping this moving and I can also meet with you and we can answer questions. Um. By, uh, the end of April, I'd like to have a preliminary reading and count and comments from the town council. And we can also post it for preliminary uh, discuss, uh, comments from the public and we'll, and we can let them know that this is going on. Um. And May of 2026, I'd like to have a public hearing about the comprehensive plan here with us. Uh, I don't want to do it as a joint hearing with the town council. It's too confusing and I would like to separate them. And I really don't want to be sitting down there doing this. So, uh, so we'll do it as a separate one. And then we'll see if town council feels by the end of May, if it's ready for some plan. Um, May and June, we can do revisions as necessary for comment, uh, for June or July council meeting. Um, and so, you know, I, I already know that I'm going to add, do a significant amount of time on this, but I hope that you guys will be able to participate as well. And even if you go to Florida for a while in the winter, that you sit on the beach with your laptop. And, uh, so we'll, um, so that's what I'm thinking right now. Um. Any comments on this?
If I may.
Yes.
In all respect, um, to, um, the Economic Development Authority, um, I don't know the last time it met with a quorum.
That's the truth.
And so I'm not impugning them. What I'm seeing is this, is that it looks to me like the process is we meet with them and then we meet with all of the other public groups. I think that it might be, um, more efficient. Um, if we meet with all the other public groups.
Okay.
And then we can meet with the, an Hancock Development Authority. And we'll ask them if we can come to their meeting when they have a quorum. And we can, that way we can efficiently do that.
All right. Good idea.
And then that way, if we aren't, and I just want to, I'll stop because if Jim's on cellular data, I don't want him to be in the mountains and then his cell goes blank on him.
Yeah.
Because he has no data. So I just want to make that a very short.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea. So.
We don't need them to have a quorum to meet with us, though.
I don't know who they are if it's on a quorum.
Right, but they have members, so.
But who are they?
They're, they seem to be having a problem with the membership. I.
No, I understand.
Yeah, they only.
No, I know what, I know what you're saying. But I'm saying is, I, I think I want to, I think we're formally meeting with people. Not informally meeting with some members of the organization. Some of the members are there. I mean, um, uh, the council member Figgy was there, Prospero was there.
Rosemary, yeah.
Cynthia, were you there? Somebody else was there, um, for it. Um, and, but it was just, if there's no quorum, it's not really the Economic Development Authority, I don't believe.
Can I ask, I mean, Main Street, did we have a forum tonight? I guess five of eight, maybe.
Yeah, I just.
They were representatives.
They were representative.
Right.
There's a difference between people being represented. I assume we can check, you know, if they, that those were the folks who were assigned or enlisted or.
Oh, so you're saying that, that because, that they, that this is a little different because it's a unit of town government?
Of course.
The EDA is.
Something.
Or something.
Same as.
It's not a unit of the, it's a separate.
A separate authority. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't have even a majority of the OBCA.
But I didn't expect.
No, no, but that didn't matter.
I don't expect everybody to come. I mean, just like a town council meeting represents the entire town. I don't expect all 1,100 people to show up. But I think that, that if, if the organization appears before the planning commission and hasn't had a quorum at their own meetings for, what, half a year? I'm concerned about what information we're getting and how legitimate they are in, in their representation.
Right.
So I think that's, I think that's an issue. I can be, oh, it's just my opinion.
Well, I've been worried about it because I felt like they haven't been able to conduct much business.
And all I'm asking is to move the.
Okay.
Is to move the timing.
All right. That can be done. That, that can be done. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, we want whatever, whatever.
Okay.
This is a very ambitious plan that you have.
It is an ambitious plan.
And I applaud you for putting it together and, and it. So we have something that we're held to.
Yeah.
We know exactly what's going to be expected. Um, it seems to me that you've put this into two parts. Till the end of the years, we're continuing to do our outreach and our gathering and.
And our, and our gathering of information.
And based on that, then we'll put it together.
Yep.
In early 26. And then.
Start the approval process.
Hopefully we can get this done within the years for all the way through the town council. We'll see.
Yep, we'll see. I, I think, you know, we've, we've got to push ourselves a little bit and I'm willing to clear my calendar to make it happen, especially the community groups between mid-October and mid-November. Um, I don't know how to get a group of teenagers, but I'd like to have a group of teenagers. So I got to figure that out.
I was just thinking about that in particular because I'm thinking of teenagers as not necessarily civically engaged.
Right.
And so I was looking at the demographics you provided us and I had a question about it. On the age characteristics in a Nantucket, uh, we have 386 under 18 years.
Yeah.
But this number is confusing me, under five years. So does under eight years to me would include under five years?
Yes, it does. It does. Cause that, I just pulled that directly off of the way data was organized at the, you know.
So we subtract the 97 under five.
Yep.
From the, uh, 386 under 18.
Yep. So we still have a lot of kids under 18.
Surprising.
Yeah.
Casey. The, um, assistant at the Stargate Hancock School is Destiny James. And she has been able to reach out to get volunteers from high schools, from different kinds of groups.
Right.
And so.
Okay.
Boy Scouts even.
Yeah.
She.
Okay.
She's got a network. She works with, I don't, we can't know who it is, but she just gets it done.
All right.
So. And then you were also talking about young people, people with children.
Yep.
So the director at the school is a Corrigan village and, uh, people may know him for buying beer downtown here for a while, but now he's our executive director. He has two small children.
Yep.
And they have networks. And we see them all the time with multiple wagons and multiple kids. So.
They're around. They're around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He knows who else is here and who's doing what.
Yeah, there's a young couple on King Street. Yeah, and some stuff like that that has a two-year-old. So. Yeah. So anyway, um, uh, well, I'll work on that and I'll get recommendations from you guys.
Are we limiting this to town residents?
I think we should. I mean, it's, it's our, it's our comprehensive plan.
That's who we represent.
That's who we represent. Um, yeah, it's for people who live in the town. I mean, I know there's people who live in the town with small kids.
Oh, yeah.
There you.
But I know sometimes, uh, you know, we hear of the people who live just outside of town and.
I know.
You know, you want to include them and, but maybe we can't.
I think we have to serve our, what is our constituency. And not the zip code. Right? I mean, we have the zip code, uh, which is a little bit different. Okay. So what I would say with this is take this away and think about it. And if you're looking at it and you're horrified and you want to, uh, you know, I can produce one that's revised, but I think it, it gives us a path. It's giving us a path forward. And, um, you know, what I'll do is take this document and as we fill, I'll sort of fill stuff in as it goes and keep it. What I'll do is I'll put this timeline in Google Docs and then I can add things like groups that we're speaking to or stuff like that. So you can see that. So I'll put that, uh, Matt has set us up with, uh, um, Google Workspace. Yeah. And so I, I know everybody's like, what? Google Workspace? But let's, let's, um, let's see if we can bring ourselves to learn how to use it, you know? Uh, so, okay. All right. Well, that gets us going on that. So. Um. Just a comprehensive. The existing comprehensive plan progress, we, uh, rather than, we can do that in a little bit, but if you'll take a look at it, uh, we have, now have data from Matt on what the action steps were in the previous plan. And then a discussion of what you know, for us is maybe we'll do that in the next meeting is to go through that in more detail and, and, um, and have questions. And we can talk about that timeline. Um. Does that sound like a good way to go for folks? Okay. Yeah, give you a chance to really look at it. I was reading it pretty closely today. So what I'd like to do now is bring up us on to the review and the discussion of the staff report regarding the rezoning application for the, uh, former Keller property. Um. And, uh, I guess the thing to do is to begin by, um, offering a summary or questions on the staff report. For those of you who may have questions on the staff report.
Well, before we start, I'd like to thank, um, whoever qualifies as the staff. Um, this was an extremely useful document.
Yes, thank you very much, Matt. Yeah. Yes, we appreciate it.
I appreciate Matt, but there's always someone behind you putting this together and they're all the staff.
Or not.
Or not, yeah. Uh, but anyway, it was extremely helpful.
So, okay. So, um, I guess what I would like to do is Matt, do you, should we have you offer, uh, a summary of this or uh, since not everybody, I don't know if you all have got the, out in the public, whether you have got, downloaded the, um, the packet. Um, if you have not, I recommended, I recommend that you take a look at it. Um. So, uh.
You know, Matt, what would be helpful to start? Could you lay out exactly what the timeline is for us in actions that we're required to take?
Yeah, sure. This month you have to have a discussion. Next month you have to have a public hearing and a decision or the immediate following meeting. After, so you've got as much as two months from now.
Two months and then we will have to have our recommendation.
Yes.
Okay. So next month will be Sep-, uh, September will be, uh, the public hearing on the application. Okay. And then we do or don't have to vote on this or we vote on that in October.
It'll be September. Let's see, September, October. Yeah, you'll have to vote in October.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's helpful to learn. It's helpful to work our way through all this. Hopefully in a month or two, I'll be a little more adept at this. Although I just started reading zoning 101 and, and it's not a book that we want to read in the evening.
No.
I mean. God, good God. Um, okay. So, uh, to review, the application has been to rezone uh, that what was the former Eller property and you guys know where that is. It is, um, just beyond Cook's Car, uh, Car Detailing on that side of the road. And it's notable for the number of wild turkeys that have been, uh, seen there of late.
Fairgrounds Road.
And it goes to Fairgrounds Road, but it does not cross Fairground Road. That's a boundary. Um, and so if you see the exist, the, um, on the north side of it is a, a small residential lot. On the south is Market Street. Uh, on the east is, um, Fletcher Frosky's old dental office, which is vacant. Um, residential large lot and Fairground Road. And on the west is, um, the hand car wash and an R2 neighborhood. Uh, residential multifamily. Um. On the, the north is, uh, is an R1C residential small, there's a small lot.
We had talked about this before, Jim pointed out.
In the creek, yes. And it's bounded by the creek, which is really important. So, okay. Um. Do, well, would, Matt, do you want to summarize this or would you rather just go at it with questions?
I'm happy to do either.
Okay. I think for the audience, for the number of people who come, let's do a quickie.
Sure.
Summary and then we'll, we'll offer some, we'll have some questions.
Sure. Uh, so the, the applicant stated intent was to, uh, put townhouses or, uh, apartments on that property, 95 townhouses and 34 apartments. Um, they've provided a drawing that shows how that would fit. And it does fit and it does say outside the RPA. So we're all clear. The criterion that I used to write this was consistency with comprehend, with the current comprehensive plan, uh, zoning compatibility, adequate adequacy of public facilities and traffic and access. Um. So the consistency with the comprehensive plan, it really is silent on future land use. But the comprehensive plan states a goal for the town, and I'm quoting, develop affordable, middle-class, long-term rentals. So that's in the current comprehensive plan. And the zoning compatibility, uh, because there's residential on the northeast and west sides, I don't think that it's uh, too far gone to um, have that zone. If it were to zone residential, it wouldn't be spot zoning. Adequacy of public facilities, the parcels within the distribution and collection system of the town drinking and wastewater systems, both can accept this number of new units. Um, and then traffic, uh, the big part of this was D O V dot performed a trip generation report, which is basically all on statistics on what communities are size, if it were to become a strip mall, if it were to become this, this would be the traffic it would generate. If it were this number of apartments, this is the traffic it would generate. So their finding was if it was residential, it has less traffic um, than if it were a B2 business. Now, I, I find a little fault with that, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to go too deep into that, but they do this, they're required to do this for us. So that's what they came up with. Um, the east side of the property is within the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act 100-foot buffer. Um, so that requires the DEQ to be involved with any site plans to make sure that the water quality impact assessment is done properly. Um, so the staff recommendation is quite simple. I'm not making one. Um. The review of the criteria alone says that the project could be approved. Uh, because it's consistent with the comp plan, it's contiguous to similarly zoned land use parcels. The public utilities are adequate in the infrastructure and there would be fewer trips compared to a developed business use. It's close to the RPA, but the preliminary site plan doesn't show, uh, it shows it outside the setback. The intangibles that you can't really include in this report that we're going to have to include in our decision is the one-off high-density zoning could be construed as, as spot zoning. Uh, if we go down that route, if we, if we keep our R2 the way it is right now, I'm not sure that their plan will fit into that property. So they're going to be requesting after this, a smaller high-density um, iteration for our zoning district. So let's just say that's high-density one. Um, and we would go back and say, okay, each unit has to be, uh, on 3,000 square feet or whatever the number ends up being, that's what it ends up being. So that is one area of concern. Um, is the new development compatible with the housing in a Nantucket? I think that's a telling question.
Yeah.
I'll just leave that on the table. Uh, considering nearby developments, there's a proposal for 870 and X more, 252 at Duncan Manor, 465 at Coastal Square. So that's nearly 1,600 housing units. Will another 129 cause market saturation or even be it feasible? Um, and then the previous in-town developers adhere to, are adhered to our existing zoning applic-, uh, limitations. So would a new higher-density, uh, zoning enumeration be fair to those who stuck with us?
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um.
I've got a question.
Yes, let's go with questions from everybody.
In my May packet, I had made a note that there were 95 town homes and 34 duplex units for a total of 129 units that would be on fee simple lots.
Right.
There was no mention of apartments at that point.
Well, the, the 34, I treated those as apartments because they were more than one unit per dwelling. They were up and down. And they were right next to each other. So I'm treating those in my mind as four units or individual dwelling units on one parcel.
Right, but there would be no actual rentals.
Well.
All would be purchased.
Somebody decides to do with their property that they buy is their business.
I'm talking about the proposal that we received.
The proposal we received was for purchase only.
Correct. So in my mind, uh, the part of the comprehensive plan that you cited that, uh, talks about increasing. that talks about increasing rentals, this plan from May does not support.
In your opinion.
Yep.
Yeah, I noted the same thing. And I, yeah, it's, you know, because, look, you're talking about housing and needs. There's a dire shortage of decent affordable rental properties around town. And so I would, I would have liked to have seen them to have some percentage of rental as opposed to just straight purchase, which actually kind of leads me to my next question. They, they discuss this could fall into workforce housing. You know, I, I sort of wonder if you just kind of take the figures that they had, you know, the average income being in, acting like being what, 57,500? Just do a little back-of-the-envelope calculation. At the end of the day, you're going to have to have at least a $1,500 mortgage per month. If you're going to purchase it, that would be kind of a minimum. And I'm not sure that that would quite fit into the idea of what workforce housing should be.
It wouldn't fit into workforce housing, I get that thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, that concerned me too. I had trouble understanding the formula. I thought, and then when I started to try to figure it out on a back-of-the-envelope, I went, wait a minute, this thing is assuming at least two people working, right? Because if you look at the average, you know, what the, you know, there's a standard of living figure, which is, uh, you know, 30, 30, about 39,000 or so, or $38 an hour or something like that. We don't approach that in our hourly wages here at all. I have to go back and look at it and make sure I understand it. But I, I found that I could not understand the, um, the formula. I just didn't understand the formula. And when I tried to figure it out, I thought, boy, this looks like you're talking about two, you have to have two people to keep this mortgage afloat.
Yeah.
Is what it looked like to me.
It seemed a little simpler than that, you're basically
Yeah, yeah.
Don't want to spend
Yeah, 60 to 120, yeah.
You know, that's, uh,
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure to get there.
Just, just a fact point also with the, we provided a water to the, uh, the, the 450-unit development. And part of the justification for providing water was that some percentage of that development was going to be workforce housing. Now, I know that's technically county and not town, but at least for me, that takes the pressure off for providing workforce housing in town, since it's just right, I mean, it's just on the other side of Fairgrounds. So, and, and, but just, just to remind us that that was part of the justification for that.
Part of our review is we're supposed to look at a site plan. Do we have the final site plan?
It won't be its final site plan until the rezoning happens.
Yeah.
Why I thought that was part of our rezoning review, no? No?
The site plan that you have is the concept.
Yeah, this is a concept plan.
Right, which isn't all that helpful. Exactly, but I
Right.
Because they talk a lot about, uh, in the zoning about the, or, or what it is you're supposed to provide in a site plan, a lot of it. So that's after we
Yeah.
Does anyone have any experience on, uh, how, uh, what the frequency is of, um, homeowners associations' roads being taken over by the towns in which they live?
Well, my understanding is these are state HOA responsibility for clearing and caring for.
Right, I mean, that's what
Yeah. I actually, I actually think that's a really weak part of the plan because the experience that I've had, not that I've been in a homeowners association, but I've had a lot of friends who have, is that homeowners associations actually don't do a good job in the main of maintaining common areas. And it's a real problem. And they, and that roads are a real problem. I mean, there's one up in Modest Town that the road's a total mess, and no one can agree on what to do with it. Plus, they're fighting over an eagle nest in one lot. You know, so there's this, you know, it's what homeowners associations can be extremely problematic. So what I want to know is, is it possible, what, you know, I know VDOT is an endless source of aggravation to you and to many others, but, I mean, is this, can this become town roads? What does that mean? Can we make it town roads without VDOT having to approve it?
We can, as long as they meet VDOT standards, which they would for stormwater and
Yeah.
urban gutter and that type of
Yeah.
In the world's best intentions, the HOA would do it, but I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I think that the town needs to take responsibility for that. I think an HOA is, um, a real, is a bad idea. It's just a bad idea. What it does is it just kind of kicks the problem away from the developer and puts it on the residents in a way that I don't think is sustainable on a variety. And certainly if you have a number of the houses that wind up being rentals, then you've got, you know, maintaining, in maintaining properties. You know, a gated something else.
Hey, Casey.
Yeah.
Casey.
Yeah, Jim, what do you want to add here?
Well, yeah, on the same thing, both, both the zoning ordinance, the R2 district and the subdivision ordinance require public roads built to VDOT standards. So they can't, they can't do what they're proposing. They, they will need an HOA to maintain their open space. But as far as maintaining the roads, and I would recommend it be, be done by VDOT because the town doesn't really have the capacity to maintain those roads. And VDOT will, will maintain them. I also wonder, have they, Matt, have they proffered anything?
Not yet.
Well, they need to think about it because, you know, they can't proffer once the, once the decision is made on, on the application. Also, on regarding workforce housing, unless it's tied to a program with specific legal requirements for incomes and whatnot, it's, it's just going to be market rate housing. Now, maybe it will be more affordable than a, a single-family home out on, on a, a large lot. But we can assume that this is not market rate housing. Whatever that may be. So anyway, I just had a couple of comments on that.
Thank you, Jim, those are really helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Any, uh, other questions about this?
I assume that the, uh, Matt, the, the interchange with Market Street, that's all done through VDOT?
Yes.
Yes, all right. And then regarding the RPA, subject to DEQ approval, do we have the opportunity to improve on the DEQ standards if we wish?
I think we could if we, you know, we wouldn't be able to extend the buffer because that's the law.
Right, no, no, I understand.
What's, what's happening inside the buffer, we can have voice on.
Yeah, with their site, on their site management.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Hey, Casey, um, just commenting on that. But, um, the Bay Act is town zoning. So the town would definitely have authority over that. DEQ and/or DCR would be handling stormwater management along with Akimak County. And it would all have to be tied together. But the town, that, you know, the town management of, of the Chesapeake Bay Act is, is part of the zoning enforcement. And also, one, one more thing, sidewalks are required in, in the subdivision ordinance. And they mentioned that there may be a sidewalk on Market Street. And we need to make it clear that, that there, there has to be a sidewalk. And there has to be internal sidewalks according to the, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you have any other questions, Cindy, or comments about this? Jeff, you got any comments about this? Okay, um, let's see if any of mine, if I have any that weren't. I will tell you, yeah, I have this thing about HOAs, that that's a problem. Yeah, and the 30%, I'm great about 30% green space, but, uh, I, I think maintenance is an, is an issue. I mean, we could go to a meadow, I suppose, you know, we could have meadows. I also am concerned about the stormwater ponds and the avoiding becoming stagnant bodies of water. Yeah, they'd have to have fountains in them.
Here, answer any questions you guys have. It sounds like you have many questions. We tried to respond to some of these, but I'd be happy to elaborate if you'd like me to approach the board.
Would you like to hear? Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Again, for the record, Chris Carball, principal with Ollahanny Group and Associates. I'm going to try to recall most of your questions. I have to touch base a little bit more on recalling on what those questions were. To start with the HOA, I mean, typically, um, our communities, especially when they have common open space, will always have an HOA. To date, it has been the preference to keep the roads private. What we've seen, not only with our towns we're working with, but also with VDOT because of the cost to maintain those roads. But if Anancock wanted to take those roads under your jurisdiction, that is completely fine with us. We just found that they typically do not want that expense. So that's why we have proposed that they be private roads. As far as sidewalks, I think our letter was pretty clear that, and even our plans, there are sidewalks on both sides of the road. We anticipated a sidewalk, as we mentioned in here in our letter, along Market Street. But that may be subject to VDOT's approval. We would like a sidewalk there. We want the connectivity to the town with this community. That's what this is all about, is provide housing where you can go back and forth to downtown. So yes, we would want a sidewalk there. As far as the Chesapeake Bay Act, obviously, all of this has to be approved. There's no way around the RPA. There's no way around stormwater management. There's no way around an appropriate VDOT-approved entrance. All those things happen as part of the process, which, as you may know, we're dealing with, with another project, is going through all those permitting procedures after the rezoning. It takes a lot of time and effort. But to do that, you need to know what project you have approved so that you can properly size your improvements for your entrance or your stormwater. Things of that sort come after you have a concept plan that you know you have support for. So just to give you some clarity on how we look at these rezonings. But everything has to comply with all the, not just the local ordinances, but, you know, your state ordinances, or the project can't happen. What other questions were there pertaining? I know we did talk about lot size a little bit. Yes, we are trying to bring that more affordable workforce housing. And I'll get into workforce housing, that was one of the, the questions I think you had. You know, again, if we're talking about a 20-foot-wide townhouse, for instance, and obviously if your typical lot is only maybe 120, 125 foot deep, and you're putting another unit next to those, that limits the size of that lot. And right now, the current ordinance requires a substantially big lot, and that does not work for this type of housing. And again, we're trying to bring that more affordable housing product. And to do that, you know, we're, yes, requesting a waiver or, you know, maybe a text amendment to allow such a thing to happen. But, you know, we have to work through that with a site plan. Again, it's just a concept we're throwing out there. If that would not be something that the town supports, yes, we got to relook at the site plan and see if we can make anything else work. To get into the workforce housing a little bit, workforce housing is defined by the state. Every locality has a median income. And as stated in this letter, that is the median income for this jurisdiction. So if any housing falls within that price range of where the housing can be covered by 30% of that median income that's been assigned to Akimak County, then it qualifies for workforce housing. So that's how workforce housing works. Now, whether we just, yes, put those on as market rate to fall within the parameter of that price point, that is something we could consider. We could also consider working with Virginia Housing. Maybe that's one funding source we would go for to do some of the vertical. But we're not there yet. We're trying to get a site plan approved to know what units we have so that we know what we're going vertical with. So then we can figure out what programs we would utilize to make the project come to fruition, if that makes sense. But those numbers, they are established by the state, not us, as far as what qualifies for workforce housing for this jurisdiction. Hopefully that helps answer that question.
Any other, do you have any, do you have any other questions?
I do. Could you speak to the ownership versus rental issue?
Well, it, it's been our intent to have fee simple ownership. There was no plan to do apartments there. As you know, we've talked about apartments on other projects outside of town. You know, you have apartments next to this, as I understand, or, you know, some other, you know, apartment opportunities in town. We thought this was a product that was missing that, again, younger families are now looking to, you know, move into. You know, again, going back to the Main Street presentation, I saw that we have a lot of similar goals, you know, get younger families here, provide housing to get more business downtown. You know, there's a lot of synergy there. That's what this project's about. That's why this property owner bought this property and invested in that town because he sees that potential. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. But these were planned to be fee simple. Now, as I informed, I, I think I mentioned in this letter, somebody can buy the, you know, a unit here, and if they choose to rent it, that's up to them. So that could happen in the community. We're not saying that can't. But, you know, our plan was to sell fee simple properties.
Okay. Do we have any other questions right now?
There was questions about profits. So, you know, that's something where, you know, again, we're here to get an understanding from this planning commission, from staff and from council about, you know, what we can do to position this project so we can gain the support of not only, you know, this board and the council and staff, but the community. We're going to try to do our best, you know, whether, you know, we need to proffer sidewalks and, you know, certain architectural components. You know, we're here to talk about that. But, you know, until you get an understanding or some feedback or communication, you know, back and forth, it's hard for us to really, you know, know what is necessary to accomplish that, to gain that support. You know, we're open. You know, we want this to be a good project. You know, we do hear that workforce housing is much needed. And I think when we made our original presentation, we said, we're willing to make a percentage of this, make sure it would accommodate workforce housing. You know, so, you know, that's on the table. You know, not likely the whole project. But, you know, like we did in other projects in the area, we've taken a certain percentage and said, we will make sure they qualify for workforce housing. And I think that's, you know, something this developer would agree with and be happy to, to proffer.
Okay. Matt, do you have anything, questions you want to ask? Do you have anything you want to ask?
Just, just a factoid again. For the, on the questions, a similar residential project that we could look at, and it talks about the fairways. Now, I know that there's a, has to be a golf course premium associated with
Oh, yeah.
the fairways because they're, they're running
700,000.
I was gonna say, start at five. When I, when I, when I, before I came in, I looked, and I thought, okay. You know, I know that, I know what, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate you're saying the, sort of the nature of what you're doing
Yeah.
is similar, not the price point.
Correct, 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 correct.
I'm just trying to be nice and
Again, there's not many multifamily housing projects on the eastern shore of Virginia because they don't have infrastructure outside a couple of areas like Anancock or Cape Charles. So, you know, to do that type of housing, you need that infrastructure.
Right.
So, you know, again, that's the type of, they have duplexes and townhomes that are built there that you can see can be done nicely. You know, again, they can You know, again, they can may be, be built to fit into the town. Um, you know, again, we don't have the architectural style yet because we got to make sure we can get a rezoning before we invest, you know, into, to that component of the project. But um, yes, you're correct.
And I'm just, and I'm just, I'm just, and I'll be honest with you, that um, I'm just thinking about the, the development just outside of town and this development and that effect on access to, to the town and what have you. And I know that VDOT said whatever VDOT said.
Correct.
And I know that the town manager said quite correctly that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, but the bike trail was in the comprehensive plan and then dispatched with for the, the uh, the larger one. So I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around how this will affect the town. I can see some major attributes, positives of it, and then I'm just trying to work my way through, you know, the rest of it. So.
And if you wouldn't mind, you know, in thinking about, you know, what we've talked about a little bit, I'd like to also submit something else that maybe you can pass around. You know, again, just as um. You know, just, I'll be happy to email this to Matt as, as well, but. You know, just as um Virginia Housing sets, you know, criteria for what is workforce housing, they also allow you to do a performer on what benefit this precise number of units and type of project can bring to a town. And I think it's, it's worth noting, you know, when we talk about the shops and the jobs, I mean, a lot of my projects, I you know, present, you know, on these shore of Virginia, it's like, well, where are we all gonna work? Where, where's the jobs and, you know, what benefits is it gonna bring? You know, this is specific in an economic impact that this shows the, the short-term economic benefit to a project of this size brings over twenty-one million dollars to the economy. And it brings in the short term over three hundred jobs. And in the long term, you're looking, you know, at, you know, a small job increase, but a long-term benefit of over a million dollars from this ha, a type of housing project to the economy. So just something to take into consideration. You guys have really there a large parcel that I, from a land planning perspective, I don't see the potential for commercial there. That's out on thirteen. I think we can agree to that. I think we want, as a community, from what I hear, we want the businesses downtown. Um, and that makes all this sense in the world. Um, but this parcel, I think, being on the outskirts of town, doesn't force all the traffic to go in town. They can walk, they can bike, they can maybe drive into town if they want to go eat or shop or whatever. But they're on the outskirts of town, close to the highway. So I really think it's a great location, you know, for this type of project. It brings you dollars to the town. There may be other projects outside of the town and not exactly bringing you directly. Um, so again, I think it's just more benefits if we take, you know, a project like this into serious consideration.
Can I ask a question about this document for an answer on the three hundred and twenty-eight short-term jobs? I'm assuming those are primarily in construction.
There's a lot in construction, but, but if you think about a project like this, it does bring other jobs. It does bring other businesses. When they see that growth associate with a housing development, that could likely land in Hancock another couple businesses downtown because of what they see happening. So I think there's a lot of factors that go into their analysis on what jobs. Yes, there's a lot of construction jobs, you know, subs that work for all those guys that, you know, build a project like that, but it's not just the project. It is other, you know, surrounding businesses that benefit.
Do you have any idea how many of those jobs would actually be local subcontractors and how many would kind of come for the duration of the build and then leave?
Well, that's, that's hard to say at this point. I mean, we're just now starting projects and, you know, again, looking at contractors. I've talked with local contractors um on some of our other jobs. What's gonna happen here? I mean, again, this, this project, if we had the approval today, we're probably two to three years out. That's how long the permitting process takes to get through all the different agencies to get a project going. So, I mean, it's a long-term deal to get something like this done, even for, you know, around a hundred units. I mean, we're looking at two years minimum to get something done.
Okay. Any questions from the rest of us? Okay, I would like an opportunity. I know we, we have, um, I know this is a little unusual, but it's public comment time. And I think that I would like the public to be able to comment and also speak to you um if they have questions specifically for you. Um, are you, could, are you willing to do that?
Sure, sure.
All right. Um, Jay, you were on the public comment list. Oh, I thought your name was on here. What's on here? Okay. Who el, who else is on public comment list? Is there anybody here who was on it ahead of time? No. Well, let's.
I think you need to, you need to come forward, Jay.
You have to come forward and speak into the mic, Jay. Yeah.
I took a look at the picture. I'm Jay Miller. I live on Market Street. Um, the one who's gonna be uh primarily affected by all that's going on with this on Market Street. What we don't, what I, what I've never seen yet uh at, at all is any kind of um any kind of, of study for our storm sewer, sewer, uh, storm sewer system. And, and the reason I'm asking that is because um we're just cavalierly dumping the, the um the storm offset from this, this project and other ones too, right down in the sewers that go right down through uh Market Street. And I know when you have a large storm, which we've had a couple of them, one in particular, I remember from maybe two years ago, that storm uh um system will uh back up. Um, it's not, it cannot handle the amount of water uh for a major storm. And my house turned into an island because of the, uh, what all of these storm uh sewer backed up and surrounded my house and we were trapped in there and my basement flooded. So um adding any more to, to what we already have, and we know that what we have now is inefficient. Um, I, I find, we, we can't just cavalierly, just poo-poo and say that we'll just dump the, the uh, the, the water off on, and onto that. When we know that can, we have, we, we have evidence that it can handle what it is. So, um, so that's a real large problem here, I, I see. Um, it, it was a problem that I had asked about uh with the, the previous, the coastal uh uh the, the project. Um, and that remains to be seen as where all that water's gonna go also. So uh that's, that's, that, that's a problem. Um, the, the VDOT uh traffic study is, is just, is unreadable on here. I, I'm sorry, but um, there's no way that you can project what, how the traffics are gonna, gonna end up being, coming out of this one road in this uh, in this system here. So, uh, and, and what I also don't understand is the, is the, uh, the the, the, how this go, how, how you can ask for a, and I've seen it, I'm, I'm from New Jersey and I've seen this happen so many times and, and I'm very sad to see it happening one more time. Where the developer asks to have a zoning uh request first before we even know what the details of. Um, and the, usually the uh, uh, the excuse for that is that, well, uh, the developer then would have uh to assume some risk. Well, you know, when you bought the property in the first place, it, it wasn't zoned for what you want to do. So the, the risk is that you, you have to be able to expect to absorb some risk. And, and the way that this is going here, and not only that, but we don't even have the um, the um, the comprehensive uh plan for the town yet. So what we're doing is we're, we're, you, we're using old news in order to justify what can be put here uh, uh, based on a, 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 a plan that we're going to modify uh and, and change. But it's gonna be too late by the time you do that in order to deal with this particular project. And so what, you know, the other, you, you know, what came out of this was, was an interesting um, um, question, which is that you have developers now who are, who are already uh, uh adhering to the zoning that they're, they're allowed to. So you want to, you want to change the, the zoning after the fact. And what's nobody's even uh, 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 considering here is that if I was a developer and I was adhering to what was here now, only to get uh sabotaged later on by a, a, a subsequent uh, 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 deal. First thing I would do is I would call my lawyer. So is the town going to uh, um, is, is the town gonna take into consideration that you're gonna be stuck with legal issues than for current projects that are underway now? If you change the rules after the fact, because they're gonna be mad that, well, you know, if you change it to this guy, uh, how come I could have put a, uh, you know, I could have squeezed a few more houses on the property that I'm developing? So I don't think that's right. I don't think, I think we have this, this is, this whole scheme is, is, is out of sync and it, it's flipped. You can't really, to me, then it makes no sense to, to rezone when you don't know what you're gonna get. What you want to do is you want to know what you get first, and then you see if that actually uh adheres to what you have as a zoning right now. And then you discuss, well, all right, maybe we can change it because this is not a bad. But this is, we're doing it reverse and I, I, I don't. And there's an also another property we're owns road, which the, which this developer owns too. So now, if you've, if you say that you're gonna change the zoning for this particular chunk, what's gonna prevent them from taking over the uh, what is now, I guess, the uh, the old air, air, the runway uh property, which he owns too. Uh, uh, you know, I mean, we're, we're already, with the, with this particular uh, uh development, that's already been approved, coastal development. You've already doubled the, the population of a Nantucket. Now we're doubling a, again, now between Duncan and this thing here. So how many people, how many people do we really need in, in a Nantucket? How, how many do we think that we can actually absorb in, in the current state of where uh a Nantucket is right now? So I don't get it. Uh, I think we're doing this backwards and uh, um, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Um, if I can answer maybe a few of his, or respond to some of his concerns, maybe it'd be helpful. Um, again, as far as stormwater, as I said, strictly enforced that we not only have to address water quantity, but water quality. I can tell you, as I'm designing and permitting right now and should have approval the coastal square stormwater plan. Just to address stormwater quality on three ponds, in those ponds to treat nutrients. So there is a strict requirement on how to take care of your stormwater. It just not, does not get discharged. It's gotta be discharged as pre uh developed rates. Um, and you've got to improve the water quality before you'll ever get an approval for a stormwater management plan. Um, so I can tell you that. It's also critical that you want to have, have your development happen where you have sufficient discharge points like a Nantucket Creek. You do not want it to have, you know, just an open pasture, something where you sheet flow water over multiple properties. You want to have safe conveyance and DQ requires safe conveyance of your storms. So again, that's actually a benefit. We're doing what we need to do to treat that water for stormwater. As far as traffic, and I think um staff has mentioned this, at that zoning right now, if I come in there with a shopping center that I could do by right, the traffic count could be enormous. That's allowed there by right. We, with this project, we are significantly down zoning that property in regards to traffic. Um, so just something to take into consideration. I do also believe, I mentioned when we first came here, that one of our proffers would be the limit, the density. If I look at your zoning for the R2 district and just ask for a blanket rezoning, I think we could by right, put a lot more density on that property. Right now, we're worried about, you know, with this project, we developments that approach four single, or four units per acre. So, you know, from a multifamily standpoint, that's really professionally considered a low-density multifamily project. Um, the other thing to think about, you know, again, this is, yes, a town decision. Do you want some growth in your town to support downtown? Or do you want to force developers to go out into the county? Again, this is one of your larger parcels. Um, you know, you can get some more benefit from that, I think, not just from your businesses, but from your economic, you know, uh, standpoint, your tax base by allowing some growth happening in town. That is smart growth. As far as I understand it, most municipalities and counties want to encourage you to go in and around the towns. And again, as I said many times, you are the one of the few jurisdictions that have the infrastructure to support such a development. When we talk about the housing need a little bit, um, as Mr. Miller said, I mean, listen, it's, it's your locality, you know, the North Hampton Akimak Planning District that has stated you're short thousands of units, thousands. We're making a dent in that, but it won't happen overnight. Our projects will probably take ten years to get through fruition. The housing demand will probably be even greater at that point. We're just getting them ready so that we can maybe do a hundred units a year. It will take time to even get to where we meet that shortage that, as far as where it is today. Um, and again, if I look at the ordinance, you know, again, I don't think there's been many townhouse or duplex developments done in the town. But if I look at it and it says, you know, the order says you should have a sixteen thousand square foot lot. Building a twenty-foot wide unit, do we really want to require that lot has to be that deep? Because I can't make it wider if I'm putting another unit beside it. Is that extra depth, depth really making sense for a townhouse property? Do you see what I mean? It's, you know, a typical lots, like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five foot deep. You know, so twenty, that establishes that square footage. Yes, it's smaller, but if I read the ordinance, you know, it says we want townhomes and duplexes, but we need a sixteen thousand square foot lot. This doesn't really work, if that makes sense. Um, so hopefully that answers some of those questions. And again, I'm happy anytime that if anybody has any questions, feel free to shoot me an email or have Matt give me a call. You know, I'd love to respond and make sure everybody's properly informed. And again, we're bringing the best project we can on behalf of this property owner to the town.
Okay.
Just uh, I think there's a misunderstanding about, about the storm water. I wasn't talking about the uh, the quality of it. I was talking about the volume of it. The volume of water that, that goes into that storm sewer right now um is too much for the system to handle. And, and we've already proved it a couple of times then. And my, and I'm a, a, you know, a sad example of what happens when you go too close. So uh, it doesn't change. It's the fact that you're improving the quality. Well, that's, that's great. And that's part of the, the deal, I'm sure. But if you add any more to what we already have, we can't handle any more than what we have now.
Understand. We want to address as much concern we can. And, and what I would say is, you know, if, again, we have issues with the street, if, 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 if staff or public works and you guys would say, listen, there's a problem with the, the drainage on the street, we easily don't discharge any water to the street. We have the opportunity, as I said here, to have a proper discharge point beyond the street that we don't have, you know, create a, a bigger problem there on Market Street.
Lex, did you want to say something?
This coastal square is not gonna discharge anything into the Market Street system, correct?
No, no, there's no planned discharges for, for any of our projects into Market Street.
And, and if this project, is there a way you cannot discharge, you know, and do they creep over to the Nordview and not discharge into our existing drainage system?
Well, that's what would be done. There's no doubt about it.
Okay, because he, Jay's exactly right. We are, that, that system is overpacked.
Yes, all of our discharges would be to a Nantucket Creek.
Okay. Okay. Um, we can take more questions now, but uh let, let me say that all that we're doing this evening is we are going to uh vote to recommend that this go to public hearing. next month. Um, and Mr. Huber, you're welcome, obviously, to come at that time. So, nothing, uh, I want, I want everybody to be very clear. Nothing's being resolved tonight. There is a conversation process, uh, going on. And I still, I have more questions, but my questions are about the law and so, uh, I won't bring them up right now.
Jim has.
Yeah, Jim, do you have anything else that you want to add?
Well, I just have one thing. And just to be clear, the only thing we're looking at here is the rezoning. We're not looking at lot sizes or anything. So that's it. So just so everybody's clear.
So what we're looking at is R2, is whether to move it to R2. Right.
Well, it, exactly, but not a variance on the lot size.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
So, yeah, that's the other thing everybody has to understand is that the first step is, are we going to make this go from a, uh, B2 to an R2? And then that doesn't mean that they're getting ready to put shovels in because then we have to go through another approval process. So at this point, what we're doing is we're deciding whether to rezone to residential. And then there'll be ongoing conversations that will take us to whether this project will continue. Yeah.
I find the application a little confusing because it says owner applicant also seeks a minimum lot size variance to accommodate more appropriate lot sizes. It makes it sound. Okay. It just makes it sound like it's just both, you know.
Staff, we wanted it to bring to your attention. We would be seeking that.
Right. But that is subsequent. Okay. So that's where we are. It's a, it's like, it's a multi-step project process, you guys, and it, it's going to be longer than maybe some people would like, but it will take place over several months. And we will work to keep it as transparent as possible. Um, and the first step is just the rezoning to R2. And then this project is a separate, they, they have just initiated this process. So am I correct in the way I'm stating that? Okay. I want to make sure I'm correct. Jim, do you want to add anything? He may be no longer with us.
I'm here. No, I'm here.
There he is.
Yeah, that is cor- the, the correct thing is that this, this request is only to rezone the property according to the current R2 zoning regulations. The part about a variance, as, as I pointed out, I think back in April, is not appropriate. And, and, and a variance would, even going through the BZA would not be appropriate. They, they would have to be an amendment to the zoning district to allow this or create a new zoning district. So, so that, you know, that, that's, that's where we are right now. But since they've applied to rezone the property, that's what we have to, uh, look at and, and make a decision on or make a recommendation on.
Okay. So I think at this point, following procedure, that what we want to do is move to go to public hearing next month. Am I correct about that? So we'll go to public hearing here with us.
Recommendation.
And then we will make a recommendation.
At that meeting.
We don't, actually don't have to make a final recommendation ourselves.
We're making a recommendation at that meeting.
No, we won't be. We're just doing a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. I have a formal motion.
You may indeed. I move that the, uh, planning commission set a date next month for the property.
Second.
Uh, do I do it, or do, should we just do it? No. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
No. All right. So next month, we will go to public hearing on the rezoning.
Are we going to set a date now or?
We'll just, we'll do it at the regular meeting.
All right.
We'll do it at the regular meeting. Uh, it may be another one of these meetings where we've got a group, somebody coming in to talk and then we'll do this, just FYI, if you don't want to sit through the whole thing. Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments this evening? All right. You guys are great for hanging in there. I really appreciate it. And I also want you to know how much I appreciate your attending. It means a lot to me. Yeah. So everybody who's out there sitting, yay for you. And anybody who's on the phone, thank you. And Jim, you're a saint for staying on there. Enjoy the rest of your vacation. So may I have, is there any other business or any statements?
Staff are sticking with it.
Are you going to have a town manager?
Oh, yeah. Do we need a town manager report? He doesn't have anything. Yeah. And we've had general, any commissioner comments?
Nope.
Nope, with us. So, all right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you guys for.